Good evening and welcome to the May 21st, 2014 Board of Education meeting. We've been in an executive session since 6:00 PM to discuss an individual personnel contractual matter. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any PIC students here this evening? Could you raise your hand? Okay. Your requirement is that you stay till 9:00 o'clock. If the meeting is still going on at 9:00, we'll take a break and you can come up and you have to sign out and we'll sign any sheets you have. If we get done before 9:00, you'll be lucky and you'll be able to leave at that time, still have to come up and sign out. Introductions?
Lynn Lenhart.
Joanne Cunningham.
Kate Navarro.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Michael Cooper.
Diane Stever.
Charmaine Woodgesinger.
And Judy Keel.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of the May 7th, 2014 regular board meeting and the minutes of the May 20th, 2014 special board meeting, election last night?
Some move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Next, Student Senate. Do we have a representative from the Student Senate this evening? Okay. If they come in, we'll give them an opportunity to speak. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Downey. It's my obligation and also my privilege to commend the board on passing and presenting and passing the 2014-2015 school budget for Bethlehem Central, as well as commend the winners of the Board of Election, Board of Education election for the seats of three year terms, and commend each of you on that. And I see you've already approved the minutes for the annual election, which was the May 20th, so, which indicated that all propositions ended up passing. And I'd like to thank the community especially for their dedication to maintaining the opportunities here in Bethlehem through this budget as being as reasonable as possible in these difficult financial times. It's been my pleasure this morning, I know along with several board members, we had the opportunity to go to Bethlehem Central Middle School for the end of the year Character Breakfast. And I'd like to commend all the middle school students. I know Mr. Klugman was here, as well as Mr. Warford and Mr. Zadorian made it a very special time and memorable for our students in each of the grade levels at the middle school. In addition, this past week, we had our National Honor Society induction. I'd like to thank Ms. Monroe for standing in for me as I was scheduled over at Hammagrove, but I also heard that the evening was a wonderful event and Mr. Reed gave an outstanding presentation to the students inducted in the National Honor Society. And then as, as well, I'd like to congratulate some of our staff. I'm not sure if they're here tonight, but the YMCA regularly honors students for their service. And this year, I had the opportunity to attend the Capital District's YMCA 17th Annual Student and Educator Awards Breakfast at the Appellian in Gilderlin. And the students receiving outstanding students awards were Annie Burdick, Guthrie Diamond, Sienna Marcel, Noah Post, Taylor Rowan, Emily Stento, Jacob Stryker, Gabrielle Turi, Gabriella Wempel, and Mr. Colum Whitman. So congratulations to each of those students and we wish them well. And then also, our very own Assistant Principal, Ms. Heather Cullen, who didn't know I was going to say this, was also awarded the Outstanding Educator Award for her service with the program at the Y.
And Girls Night Out.
And Girls Night Out. So, we want to thank you for your service in representing all of our students here at the high school. So, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, these are just a few of the sample good news items that are happening here in Bethlehem Central. I'm not going to waste a lot of time because there's so many and I know the board will also add to them, so that I'll keep my comments brief. I'd like to turn it over first to a couple recognitions for our history team here at Bethlehem Central and the work that their parents and advisors have done. But I'd like to ask our high school principal first to come forward in regards to the Bethlehem varsity team. Mr. Landry.
First off, congratulations, the Varsity History Bowl. This year, the Bethlehem's, Bethlehem team finished in 23rd place out of 132 teams overall. I'd like to recognize the following if Tom Sheridan, Jonah Goldberg, Max Rosenberg, Benjamin Weinstein, and Eric Wolfsburg could come forward, please.
I also want to recognize the students who are on the JV team that participated. Will Anderson, Michael Bartlett, Daniel Connolly, and Robert Willard. And many thanks to the parents and the high school PTO that made this possible, Mrs. Weinstein and Mr. Wolfsburg, if you're here, if you could stand up, because thank you very much for your support.
Are you having Mr. Zadorian come forward? He has the heart.
Yeah, I'm actually not deserving to make these announcements, and I actually wanted to say a note about Mr. Zadorian, who is. So I'm going to call him up in a moment, but before we recognize the students, I wanted to recognize the efforts of Mr. Zadorian. We, at one point, had a bunch of students approach Dave and say, "We'd like to do this." So Dave kind of put the challenge back on them and he said, "Make sure you organize a group, get the group together," thinking that maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't, wasn't really sure. And sure enough, I think in less than two weeks, they came back to him and said, "Okay, we're ready." So Dave said, "All right, let's do it." So with that, I put a lot of credit on Dave's shoulders. Dave also traveled with these guys to Princeton, New Jersey, and to Washington DC. So he definitely went above and beyond. He loves working with these guys and I know he's going to miss some of you guys as you go up to the high school, but we will be following your progress. So with that said, I'd like to bring up Mr. Dave Zadorian.
Wow. Thank you. Not necessary, but certainly thank you. The real thanks should go to our, this is a kind of a unique situation. We have a middle school team that participated in the National History Bowl Tournament. My first time doing this, so it was really exciting for me to be part of that and I want to call up our middle school team that participated in Washington. I want to just note too, there were several other members that participated throughout the year that couldn't make it tonight. We want to recognize the guys that were in Washington and we'll talk about their achievements in just a second. So Michael Connolly, Javi Cruz, Liam Donnelly, Billy Lombardo, Gregory Giacino, and Jonathan Caldwell, come on up, guys. These guys competed against JV level competition at the national championships and out of 84 JV teams, they came in 27th overall. They also took first place, which you see the trophy that they're holding over there for the middle schools that participated in this competition. They are an amazing bunch of kids. I learned tremendous, tremendous amount about history that I never even, never even heard before. If you've ever, ever heard any of the History Bowl questions that kids have to answer, it's pretty amazing. They're fantastic, the varsity team and other JV teams as well. Thank you to the PTO for making it possible for us to go and be there. And I know a few of our students are going to go on to the national tournament, the middle school tournament, which is in Atlanta in another week or two. Michael, Javi, and one of our other teammates, Sarah Cohen, who couldn't be here tonight, will be, be going to that tournament and participating and hopefully bring home a championship. We will see. So, thank you to the parents for supporting us throughout the year. You guys were amazing as well and traveled with us and, and went through the entire experience. So thank you again to everybody and to the board for supporting us and certainly again to our students. Also, Mr. Wolfsburg and Mrs. Weinstein, if you could come back up? Come on, come on up.
board many times this year and we appreciate her giving so much time, Ms. Melanie Painter, for our Congressional Art Awards and some of our other art competitions.
And I wouldn't be the art supervisor if I didn't have the key to show you.
So what these are, these are some samples from the juried regional exhibits that we do at the high school. Many of our K-12 students have received accolades for all of the artwork that they've been, they've been creating throughout the year. But what I'd like to highlight this evening are the students that have been participating in our juried regionals. These have made it through selection processes here at the high school to be selected for the shows and also by a panel of our educators and professionals in the art world who selected these pieces to be in these shows. There are three shows that we're honoring students for this evening. It's our 15th Annual Albany Arts Center High School Regional, which features artwork that's in drawing mediums, in digital mediums. We also feature artwork from our Capital Region Media Arts Festival. So this is some of our filmmaking students, our photography, and also our graphic design students. And then we also have artwork from our Fulton Montgomery Community College High School Art Show as well. So I'd like to call up the students that participated in these shows and acknowledge them for their hard work that they achieved in having these artworks in those displays. Ms. Rachel Begane, Ms. Kendra Bouchard, Mr. Phil Hooper, Ms. Audrey Keef. So as I call your name, you can come on up and we'll start to get you guys going here. Mr. Ryan Kennedy, Mr. Luke Kubisch, Ms. Elizabeth Leupold, Mr. Benjamin Murdock, Ms. Brigid Riley, and Ms. Megan Wenth. And as we get to the end of the slideshow here, you're going to see some photos of some of our students at the Congressional Art Competition. We also had three students that were selected to be part of this exhibition. They were Ms. Gabriella Bueller, Ms. Amanda Crowley, and Ms. Teagan Samazic. Gabby's piece was, was, had an honorable mention and we also had a second place award winner as well. Teagan earned second place and Amanda Crowley earned an honorable mention for her artwork in the show. And there were only four awards in the entire Capital Region, so I'm really proud of our students here in Bethlehem for the achievements that they had in this art show. So congratulations to all of them. And I'd like Gabriella, Amanda, and Teagan to come on up and join us as well.
Meeting will be over soon. Well, we do know how many more individuals are left that are in participation in government.
Your second from last chance to make it.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes my report. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished this year and we have many more great things to come as we close out the year for our graduating class as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Next is the Board of Education report. I'd like to start by thanking the community for supporting the budget. I mean, we had almost a 69% favorable vote on the budget, which is phenomenal and I thank the community for that. They supported the bus proposition and then elected three new board members, myself, Joanne Cunningham, and Christine Beck. So Christine will be starting on July 1 with us. Oh, Christine's here? Oh, good. I didn't see you back. I thought you were one of the students back there. So congratulations. And as Tom had mentioned, this morning, there was a character breakfast at the middle school. We, several of us were able to be there and participate and we can congratulate and commend the students that were recognized today. Anyone else have stuff?
I was, I was able to make the Heart and Soul art reception. It was lovely. Many of the pieces were shown on the screen and several, I think, are still out there. And also, I caught part of the high school jazz band during the vote and I know there were several other student groups performing throughout the day. Just want to appreciate their efforts and the efforts of the staff and faculty who worked with them to make it a really pleasant experience for the community when they came in to vote.
I'd like to make one comment. I've been at the library the last couple weekdays as my son's been being tutored and the observation I make, there are so many Bethlehem kids being tutored there in the afternoon. It is shocking to me. I was there for half an hour and eight different kids had paid tutors there in the afternoon with them from high school all the way down to middle school. And I was there, again, twice this week, different days, different kids, all paid adult tutors that were there. There is a huge need for kids in this district to get extra help. And they're going outside to get it and they're paying for it. And this is just a snippet of what is going on. I mean, probably if I sat there till 9:00 o'clock, I would have seen 30 or 40 kids come in. There's also a lot that are getting tutored at home and other people's houses and they're, and they're paying for it. And I would like to see somehow, we make a difference in those kids. And whether it's the extra time, the better use of study halls, home base, before school, after school, high schoolers tutoring kids, it's, if there's the need is as strong as it seems to be to me from just seeing that, these are just kids that are paying and it's not cheap. So there's probably a much, much bigger need than we know of. And I would like to see if at all possible, the school district make an effort, the administration within the individual schools make an effort for these kids. You'd be shocked. If you go by, go by between 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock and see how many people are meeting tutors, switching the tutor, adults coming in, they, they are, starting at square one, I sat next to multiple ones, going through lessons on these kids. And it's amazing to me.
Can I just add something to that? The one thing that may be going on is prep for SATs and ACTs because my daughter, and she's working with one of those programs, but has been at the library with an ACT prep program.
This was not, this was chemistry, this was freshman math, this was junior math. This was, this is what we did in class today. This is, I didn't understand the physics today. I didn't understand where this math is coming. I mean, just sitting next to them, there were sixth grader in there, seventh grader. Because my, my son, as we were walking out, said, "Is it finals week?" He's like, "Why are so many kids getting tutored here right now?" I say, "It's not finals week and it wasn't SAT books and it wasn't that." So, I mean, just looking around, it was scheduled meetings with people where they sat down and were basically going through the lessons. And that shouldn't be happening, I don't think, to the extent that it seemed to be.
Well, in defense of the staff, in defense of the staff.
What?
The high school has peer tutoring.
Okay.
Teachers are, do stay after school with students, but I know with some students, they, they just feel either there are too many students or they can't, you know, they have a particular problem or whatever and, and sometimes feel they need to go outside of that to get, to get the extra help. You know, sometimes just not enough, especially if several students are staying after school, you know, in a particular classroom.
What might be useful is, as we start the next year, for the assistant superintendent and, and the superintendent to keep us abreast of how many students might be using services like the, what do they call the math? What is, it's like, not Math Lab, but they call it something else.
We have a lot of peer tutoring.
Yeah, the peer tutoring, but there's also like, there's a math center. What do they call it? They call it like?
Resource rooms.
Uh, resource, yeah, math, resource. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's special ed. You can't, everybody doesn't have access.
Right, right. But just to get a sense of who, how many kids may, from the teacher's perspective, may need that or may require it. I know that the, the Math Honor Society, I think the French Honor Society, they all offer peer tutoring and I know with the middle schools, some of the teachers are offering after-school sessions, because my kid was at one today, for the state tests that are coming up, like the math, science exams. So, but to keep us abreast of how many, if you feel that kids are being underserved in terms of additional support that the district should be providing. I mean, I think there's a line between what the parent might choose to do or what a kid might need, but, you know, I think you do that anyway, but definitely, you know, keep us abreast.
And I do know that several students have been tutored in the past and a lot of parents do pay for it. Sometimes it's not just for them to pass. I mean, sometimes it's, they want them to be in the mid-90s or whatever versus, you know, an 85 or 90. So, I mean, there's a lot of different reasons why people will hire their tutors. But, yeah, I agree, there's a lot of parents who spend a lot of money and I think the going rate's about $50 an hour for tutoring.
And my experience was always that the teachers were more than willing to provide help after school, so.
That's not been my experience, honestly.
It's been my experience, my one daughter stays after a lot to get extra help. And then she's also like, they even hooked her in with the peer tutoring and stuff like that.
But I think in the high school, this is the ninth period anyway, so that's, teachers are available. I don't, I don't say that's tutoring per se, but the teachers are available. I know they are running help sessions. It's been my experience of people, I know some people who do employ tutors, sometimes kids are in accelerated classes and the only reason they're making the grade to stay in that class is because they're being tutored. So, I know that I personally have adjusted for a child next year because the grades are kind of on that borderline. It's like, well, why are we doing, pushing this for when she doesn't necessarily need to be at the double Excel or the super, you know, whatever? She can just go back to the simple accelerated. But I'm not saying that's for everybody, but I do know personally of kids who are in accelerated classes and the reason they're staying in there is because of the additional work as opposed to making the choice to drop a kid to a grade level. But I'm not saying that's for everyone. You saw, because I also, I also see lots of tutoring going on at the library.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on. At this time, the board would recognize anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on any specific agenda items. Is there anyone here? No? Okay. Then we, we'll have a fast meeting tonight. The next item is finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through D.
Some of the second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number eight, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through C.
Some of the second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Support, item number nine, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through F.
Some move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number 10, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action item A.
Some move. Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any, any opposed? Any abstention that carries?
Just want to add in because you're on a roll.
No, they're on a roll.
Just before you get to future meetings, I know we sent out the master schedule for the high school with enrollments and so forth. I have Mr. Landry here. Are there any questions, thoughts, or concerns? I think he's tried to explain where some low enrollments were, justifications and so forth, from the board, why we have Mr. Landry here.
No, it looks good. I assume that the classes that were new, added new, like with only a few kids, it's because you have an overflow and more kids will be put into there. There were some that were just like added, yeah. Looks good.
One of the classes we created was the Principles of Engineering in math. The after it was created, we had five hundred students. Some of the others though, because they can't be viable, we're going to have to work and try and find those.
And that's just the, for, I mean, we're still at the early stages of scheduling, so in the fall, usually I think around October, after Bed-Stay, we usually give you an updated, here's the current sectioning with the enrollment, so you'll have that again in the fall.
Scott, would you say moving it two months ahead has been really helpful in helping you maximize your staffing, even though I know there's a lot of discussions and so forth?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing was that this year, the ability to look at the schedule and recognize the fact that we desperately needed another section of Principles of Engineering. Also needed another section of Enrich Bio, another section of AP Chem. That this time it allowed us to condense sections. There were three chemistry classes that were all of 15. Combine those into two to create another section. We also looked and enrolled in other department areas. We were able to take, I mean, two out of, I think, three out of the English department because then there was not enough requests to justify some of those courses. So for this year, we were able to add where it was needed, the Science Department. So that it was very beneficial to do that.
So practically, you'll be able to do this each year and maximize your staff?
Absolutely.
I found it interesting that, just the comments with the Chinese about the French and not having as many kids and things. There were more kids opting to continue to take French after they'd made their requirement than there were total in Spanish, even though there's far fewer kids that started it. So, I mean, so it seems to be an excellent program, just looking at the numbers, because kids are opting to complete it and all through high school.
And the nice part is getting the numbers during the budget process helps us to maximize the budget, so.
So do you have the ability, if kids from this point on decide they want to opt into a class, to accommodate them?
If, if there's, if there, it depends on the class and then when it would run. So, right now, this is the process, if there's conflicts or something doesn't fit in a student schedule or they decide they'd like to take something else, they work with their guidance counselor. And then they look at if it's, if it's open and then is it going to actually fit in the student's schedule? And if not, they can choose something else or...
And if not, they can choose something else, or, so that's kind of where it is now, you know, you get into some of those conflicts and trying to iron the wrong.
And how often do kids actually get closed out, not because of the schedule conflict, but because the class is full?
Percentage, well, more and more. I mean, because we've had so many more reductions, so we have less sections, but I think what Mr. Landry was indicating is that, you know, when we looked at, for example, this year we had a lot of students requesting some of the sciences and tech classes. We can then look at other ways to combine sections, so we can then offer, and then we would go back to those students who are on that waiting list to see if they still want that and load those classes. So we have a good number of students who got shut out of a class, but sometimes that's because they want, this class is more of a priority, they want to be in AP Physics more than they want to be in AP Spanish. So it comes down to some of the choices, and sometimes, you know, they're out because there's just, we started, a few years ago, when we started reductions, giving seniors first option, then down to junior, sophomore. So if someone is a sophomore, they're more likely to get closed out of a course than a senior's, thinking that they still have a couple of years that they could potentially get in those classes. So it's hard to quantify because there's so many different factors, but we'll have, we can provide you with how many students didn't get in, for example, their first request, but it could be a variety of reasons as to why they didn't.
Right. Okay.
Anyone else on ahead?
All right, at this time, the board would recognize visitors. Anyone who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? If you're being done, we'll move on. Future meetings, the next regular board meeting is Wednesday, June 4th at 6:00 PM. The executive session will start. The night before that, on Tuesday, June 3rd, will be an audit committee meeting at 5:30. Wednesday, the next board meeting after the June 4th one is Wednesday, June 18th at 6:00 PM. And then Tuesday, July 21st, will be our organizational meeting of the new board. And we also will have the moving up ceremony on the 26th, Thursday, the 26th? Is that correct?
Graduation?
Moving up, the eighth grade moving up is at, I believe, Thursday morning, the 26th. The board is invited to that. And then graduation will be on Friday evening at 6:30 at the CFQ Arena on the 27th. The reception for newly tenured staff will be at our next board meeting, prior to that, from 6:30 to 7:00 PM out in the foyer here. And then the Elsmere Alumni Teachers and Friends, the Pride Committee at Elsmere would like to, could invite you to attend a special assembly on May 30th at 2:30 to honor the Elsmere BC Class of 214. We hope you'll be able to attend the assembly and have the opportunity to see former Elsmere students and catch up on their lives and future plans, so.
So if board members are able to go, please just let Brittany know, and she'll take care of all the arrangements for this class.
Matt, I have a quick question. When does the CODA Student Connect have to be re-approved? Like, does it have to be approved every year, the CODA Student Connect?
I think that's a usual.
Organizational meeting?
I think then the, maybe for Brittany, we should probably get the policy committee together sometime, because that timeframe is going to sneak up on us, and we have to at least go through it. And also, just for the board's information, I think I mentioned in the email, I'm out of state all of next week, so.
It depends. Is there any, you would have to get together as a policy committee if there's any recommended changes needed. I haven't heard anything at this point. I mean.
And that would be true also for purchasing.
Right, purchasing. If there's no changes, you just have to bring them up each year and have board action upon that. So I don't know how everybody feels, but.
Should we get together just to review them at least? I mean, to go through, because I know a couple of years ago, there was a huge, it took us weeks, we got through a huge change of CODA Student Connect. I thought we made some changes.
That was for the new dignity for all students to have them. There really hasn't been any changes since.
And the faculty and staff haven't recommended any changes?
Well, maybe Brittany can send the ones that we automatically have to.
Just look at and then.
Yeah, sure.
To the policy committee, and we can take a look at them and then decide if there's a need to meet.
Because one of the things is you authorize them, and if there's changes, you can also change them after the fact as well.
All right, there is no need for us to go back into executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
First and second. All in favor?
Competition.
We are adjourned. PIG students, you need to come up, and there's sign-out sheets so that you can get credits. And if you have sheets that you have a board member sign, we're here to do that for you.